Can you roll in on the campaign trail?
Getting there. I did my filing last week, so I guess there's five minutes.
Good evening. I call this meeting to order. It's the regular council meeting of July 22nd, 2019. The time is 7:30 PM. Let's begin with an invocation by Councilor Grafstein and the Pledge of Allegiance, then we can take roll. Councilor Grafstein, would you please rise if you're able?
We thank God for having given us the opportunity to meet here together today, and we ask most humbly for a blessing of our gathering. Brighten our eyes with greater understanding, enrich our hearts with compassion and courage, and again, receive our gratitude for this opportunity of fellowship. Amen.
Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Will the clerk please take the roll call?
Mayor Pro Tem Bliss?
Yeah, I'm here.
Councilman Corbett? Councilman Geddings?
Here.
Councilor Grafstein?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
Councilman Soltis?
Here.
Mayor Hartwell?
I'm here. Is Mr. Corbett president? He's in the restroom.
He just went to the bathroom.
All right. How are we going to record, Mr. Corbett? Not in the room?
Oh, I'll indicate it as when he arrives with time.
Okay, thanks. All right. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Great. We have a presentation tonight. It's the 2019 Bike Rodeo winners. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes. The Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union have donated bicycles to the raffle winners of the 2019 Police Department Bicycle Rodeo, and a representative is here along with Police Chief Cory Haynes to make those presentations.
Welcome, Chief Haynes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight is the night for the presentation of bikes from the annual Bicycle Rodeo and Police Open House. This year, the open house was on June 8th, and in previous years, we had about 250 in attendance. This year, it was well over 500. So, the event has grown by leaps and bounds over the last couple of years, which we are very happy and excited to report. And this year, again, we have, from Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union, we have Sheila and Monique. Sheila will be the new branch manager here at the Madison Heights office. Did you guys want to come up and say anything on behalf of the credit union? Putting me right on the spot. Every year, they have been a great partner with the city and with the bike rodeo in particular by donating bikes.
That's great.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. On behalf of the Board of Directors and our CEO, Pete Gates, we are pleased to continue our partnership with the Madison Heights Police Department and thrilled to be able to see the recipients of the winners of our bike rodeo. So, thank you so much for allowing us this time.
Very good. Thank you.
And also here tonight, we have a representative, Felicia, from D&amp;D Bicycle Shop in Berkeley, which is where not only we purchase the bikes, but they also, every year of our bike rodeo, they have a person that's in attendance that does bicycle repair for all the kids that bring their bikes to the rodeo. So, at this time, I'll announce the winners. The first winner is a two-year-old, Catalina Armstrong. She has her mom Samantha and her grandma Carleen here tonight, so if they want to come up, we'll have Felicia bring the bike over and present it to them.
Yeah.
And our second winner from this year's rodeo was Brody Walker, who's three years old. He has his babysitter Tana here this evening to assist him in getting his new bike. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for allowing us to have tonight to do the presentation.
Of course, Chief. There are no public hearings tonight. Are there any items on the agenda of interest to parties in the audience? If not, we'll go to a meeting open to the public. If anyone would like to address City Council, now is the opportunity. Meeting is open to the public. If you'd be so kind to identify yourself and any affiliation, and also be so kind to limit your comments to three minutes or less. The meeting is open to the public. No one's asked to be recognized or to speak, so the meeting's closed.
Nope.
Oh, sir, come on up to the microphone. Welcome. This is the opportunity for people to speak on any subject. It's kind of just like the open forum, any subject. You get to say whatever you want for up to three minutes, and we patiently listen. Welcome, sir. Your name, please?
Jeffrey Gregory.
Welcome, Mr. Gregory.
I live at, on Harwood, just south of Lincoln.
Yes, sir.
Right with 75 Expansion Projects going on. I went on Thursday to the MDOT open house that you guys had up here and was pretty concerned about what the plans were for my neighborhood. From what they're saying, the 11-mile exit is going to be coming off right at the end of my street. I didn't buy a house on Service Drive. I surely didn't buy a house right next to an exit ramp from a major expressway. They told me to talk to you guys to find out if there was any way we could remediate the situation. Some of, I talked to some of my neighbors on my street. The only way, in my opinion, to remedy the situation is either move the express, move the exit ramp from I-75, or dead-end the streets that are going to be affected by this. So, that's why I'm here talking to you.
Yeah, we agree with you 100%. For years, the city of Madison Heights has officially opposed this project, and every time we speak up, MDOT doesn't listen. They don't give us all the details. They point other fingers. Sounds like they told residents to come yell at us, but it's not our road.
Okay.
It's not directly our money. I guess indirectly, we pay the feds and the state. But we're with you 100%. It's very frustrating. They will disrupt the city, especially your neighborhood, and we're fighting for you, but we don't have answers because they don't give us all the answers.
Okay. Who do I talk to that can give me answers? I mean, no offense.
We will be your advocate. I promise you that.
So, they told me basically they can't do anything. I gotta talk to you.
What's the specific address on Harwood? The number on Harwood?
661 West Harwood.
661 West Harwood. If they say they can't do anything, that means they won't do anything.
Well, they said that they can't close city streets in Madison Heights.
Right.
It's up to you guys to decide if you want that street closed or not.
Oh, good. That's a great suggestion.
So, it's just a suggestion. There is, there's no, what is the next course of action for me to take if, 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 do I gotta call MDOT and talk to MDOT?
Come into City Hall, because a live meeting on TV is not the best place to have a conversation.
Okay.
You can come to City Hall, and you can meet with me or the city manager. The city manager's Melissa Marsh.
Okay.
She'll give you all of the, all of the information you need, all of the opportunities and legal remedies that there are that exist.
Okay.
But the city is a subdivision of the state, and we tend to always lose that fight. They're bigger than us. But we will empower you with as much knowledge and law as we can.
I, I, just, what, MDOT, I mean, you're talking to me like the MDOT guy did.
Yeah.
And you're my city council.
Right.
I mean, you guys can say, yeah, we're looking at a way to close the streets down that are going to be affected by this. I mean, my property value is going to be affected by it big time, and you don't want to have a discussion on IPV about it.
We, we...
It's what it is. I'll come up and talk to you guys privately. That's what it takes.
Yeah, Mr. Gregory, the meeting is more for you to unload things on your chest and for us to take notes. If you want the back and forth and rolling up our sleeves...
Back and forth, I just want, like, you guys to say, yeah, there is something we can do about it. Obviously, there's, from what I'm understanding right now, there's nothing that you guys can do about.
No, no, we're not saying that. We're saying we're very limited with information, and the law extremely limits us. And it's definitely, MDOT is a bully. But please come to City Hall so we can actually guide you through all the steps so you feel better informed and that you feel truly that the city is on your side.
Okay.
Because we're not happy with it. We feel the same as you.
Well, I assumed you guys did, but I just didn't know the course of action that I needed to do to talk to them, so...
Good first step.
All right, thank you.
Meeting is still open to the public. Would anyone else like to address City Council on any subject?
I have, uh...
Yes, sir. Your name and address, please.
My name is Stuart Davis. My address is 668 West Harwood.
Thank you, sir.
And I live right across the street from my neighbor.
Yes, very good. Thank you, Stuart.
And I have the same complaint about the expressway possibly getting off there at Lincoln, and I guess my suggestion would be if they're going to do that, then they need to put a privacy wall up and maybe make our street a dead-end street. So, we have more privacy and without the noise and everything coming in.
That's a great suggestion.
But you're saying that I need to come to City Hall or to see you guys individually?
This is really just your time to speak. It's not for us to have substantive conversation. You get to speak, and that's the end of it. If you want really to have, like, a real conversation, that's when you just, you come to City Hall, meet me, meet the city manager, meet the Department of Public Services. But at the meeting, it's just you at a microphone, you get to speak, and we take notes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, that's my complaint, and, okay?
Yeah, very good. Would anyone else like to address City Council on any subject? Hey, welcome.
Good evening. My name's Colleen Porter. My address is 30223 Longfellow.
Welcome.
I believe it was brought up in the last meeting, even closing comments by Councilor Grafstein about a citywide garage sale. I have seen some posts on the local Facebook page of people, like, in support of it, and I just want to say that I'm in support of that. I attend the other local citywide garage sales, and I think it's, would have a number of benefits, including getting some people into seeing our city. I'm ashamed to say that I grew up in Royal Oak, and I didn't even know of some of the beautiful subdivisions here in Madison Heights. And I just think that if it's doable, it would be a great thing. That's it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address City Council on any subject? All right. This portion of the meeting is closed. Next item on the agenda is, will be ordinances. G1, it's an ordinance from the city attorney's office, number 2142, the payment in lieu of taxes request for 30021, 31, and 71 Dequinder. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes. The city was approached by Cypress Partners, who was recommending a payment in lieu of taxes or a pilot in connection with a luxury affordable senior housing development on three parcels located at 30021, 30031, and 30071 Dequinder. In accordance with the Michigan State Housing Development Act of 1966, and in compliance with Mishta requirements and guidelines, the city of Madison Heights is authorized by this act to charge a pilot instead of property taxes. This is an annual service charge to be paid by any or all classes of the housing exempt from taxation under this act at any amount the city chooses not to exceed taxes that would be paid for this property. Cypress Partners is proposing a 120-unit senior luxury affordable housing development with units available to various income levels to be constructed on these three parcels on Dequinder. In order for a housing development to occupy this space, Cypress Partners will also need to submit a rezoning request, a rezone from residential to office, a special use permit, and a variance to allow residential on the first floor. In order to make this project feasible for the developer, the city was requested to consider a pilot. After several months of discussions, the city attorney and I have negotiated the specific pilot terms. The terms are for a 40-year period, as required by Mishta. We have negotiated these terms with Cypress Partners, conditioned upon city council approval and included in this ordinance, which provides for a single project to pay in lieu of taxes 4% of net shelter rents to be split between all taxing units. The pilot would take effect upon, once approved by Mishta, once 42% of the units are occupied by low-income tenants. In addition, staff is working on a separate emergency services fee at an annual rate of $25,000 that increases each year by CPI, as retained by the city, and in addition, a $100,000 emergency services payment to offset the anticipated increase in emergency medical services. Estimates for the 4% of net shelter rents would be $64,000. The city would retain about $20,000 of that amount. Additionally, as mentioned above, the city would receive $25,000 under the municipal services agreement for a total of $45,000 annually. This is in addition to the initial lump sum payment of $100,000 payable to the general fund. As the parcels currently exist, they pay a combined $9,700 in taxes with $4,000 going to the city. Valuation of the proposed project based upon the supplied construction cost would project taxes of $360,000, with a portion of that going to the city. So, this would be in lieu of that payment. The city attorney and I recommend approval upon first reading of this ordinance for the pilot agreement with Cypress Partners for these three parcels, and there are representatives. Jeff Buck from Cypress Partners here tonight, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Oh, what's the wish of City Council? Is there any action on this item, or we'll pass?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we adopt ordinance 2142, the payment in lieu of taxes request for the three addresses on Dequinder.
Okay, thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Grafstein?
Support.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilor Grafstein, to approve the pilot agreement with Cypress Partners for the three parcels on Dequinder, 3021, 331, and 371. Is there discussion from City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Bliss?
Yeah, I think we were all still in awe of the bikes being handed out, which is why we didn't, like, jump in there. I think this is a good, a good deal for the city. When you look at the lump sum of it, obviously, I'd love for us to get an even better deal, but the reality of the situation is you have to start building and having developments in order for there to be more developments. It's, you know, I hate to say, but it's kind of like Field of Dreams approach. If you build it, they will come. This is going to not just add additional tax revenue to the city, which is desperately needed, but it's also going to add residents to our community and solve a need, a housing need, that is necessary within our community and as it sits right now. So, I really think it's good for the city. I don't enthusiastically support it because I think, I liked the original deal. This, this has gotten a little bit weaker as, as it's progressed, but overall, it is still a huge benefit to the city, and I am excited about seeing that development take place. And I think it also alludes to some of the zoning changes that we're going to need to make as we do our master plan through Planning Commission, because we have to be able to kind of foresee these things. Dequinder Road probably should not have had residential on it at all, all of this time. And so, being able to make sure that we can plan for the future of the city is, I think, also important. So, long story short, I support this, and I think it's going to be good for the city.
Yeah, this was a really special package of state laws that helped form the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, and, you know, the many decades that this program has existed and then is more recently amended, is specifically designed to provide affordable housing. It's specifically designed to provide senior housing, and these are two of the larger policy goals that the city hasn't really been able to accomplish on our own. But this state law and the partners and Mishta help make a, help close a good deal to bring more housing in Madison Heights. And you'll hear one of the complaints about, especially a lot of our seniors who may have outgrown the large ranches with basements that they own, is they still want to live in the area that they love, and no. They have their doctors, their pharmacist, their shopping, their friends, their grandkids. They don't want to leave the area, and so this will provide dozens of affordable housing units. And I was also surprised, as I was studying the documents from Mishta, that these projects actually preserve the property values of the surrounding neighborhoods. There's no hit on the property value of the houses that currently exist next to this. It'll actually, in fact, and in practice, and based on the evidence of past projects, preserve the property values of its neighbors. So, like the Mayor Pro Tem said, this will be an increase in taxes from just the status quo. It'll provide an additional 100 units of housing, and so if those are our current seniors downsizing from their current house, it'll open up those ranches and colonials to new families looking to move into Madison Heights. But either way, it's a net win for tax and a net win for attracting residents. So, I'm in on it. I'm going to, I'll support it. Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Scott?
I would like to ask some questions on the petitioners, unless our city manager could answer them now. Should I just ask what they are, or...
Yes, sure, but the representative is also here, so...
Okay, that would be fine. If I could talk to one of them. Thank you. Just a generalized question. How common are pilots? Are they something that are on the rise throughout the country, the pilot arrangement?
Michigan has many of them. They've had them for many years.
Okay.
Yes.
And I know it says, once 42% of the units are occupied by low-income tenants. Do you anticipate when that would take place?
I would say that it's probably pretty soon. Kaya, who's also here, she has more knowledge on the pilot than I do.
Okay.
Could you tell us your name and company?
Yes, Jeff Buck from Cypress Partners.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yep.
Hi. Your name, your name, please?
I'm Kaya Barker from Associated Management. We're also partners on the deal, and I've managed and developed these since 1986, our first one, Westland, that's still thriving.
Good.
Beautiful. So, the 42 that will be preserved, 42% that are for people with lower income, I'd be surprised if they weren't completely occupied within six to eight months after opening. Takes a little bit of time to purchase other homes and make those arrangements up.
Yes, because I know when you refer to them as luxury affordable, to me, those are contrary. You know, it usually doesn't come together.
That's what's unique about these properties, and the only way that they can happen is because of the pilot. 42% of the residents will be lower income, but you won't know whose income is what when you're in the building. You'd never know who was getting a discounted rent.
And will there be any available skilled care units?
There's no skilled care. It's independent living, but we have a huge amount of common area with a restaurant that has optional meals on it. There's a gym, and there's a theater, and there's a lounge in case somebody wants a cocktail that you can use.
Right.
There's billiards, and all kinds of things for people to do. As far as skilled care, we do partner with home healthcare agencies that usually come and get a few residents in the same building, so they offer healthcare much cheaper than going to send individual homes.
Right.
They'll come in and go to townhouses.
Home.
And as the property ages, sometimes they actually get a space within the building as the residents age, so that there's, we do 24-hour care. Say, we have one right now, or seven left that we have sold, and those seven all have, I'd say, six of them have 24 hours. Somebody on the property, 24 hours. They don't work for us. They're a separate entity, but it makes it, that costs much less than it would be in those people in the home.
Right. Now, would the rent for each unit include all the utilities as well?
The rent is based on 30% of 60% of median income, which is complicated, but that does include utilities. So, the utilities will be paid separately, but when we do the math on how much the rent is, we'll deduct the amount of utilities from the non-rental payoffs.
And when do you anticipate advertising this as available to seniors?
We normally start, there may be something around a little bit before that, when we close, when we start construction. We'll be down to a whole deep scale until about 120 days out.
Okay.
When the building's supposed to be completed.
All right. Have you had any or heard any objection from the, the property owners to the west behind the units?
No.
No comment?
It's been our experience in the neighborhoods that we built in have done better than the other neighborhoods. In Westland, the neighborhood around us had new construction and stuff added that wouldn't have probably happened if they didn't have this beautiful retirement community, like, community right now.
Yeah, because I would anticipate that you would make some nice, attractive landscaping and...
It's going to be beautiful.
What about traffic control on Dequinder? Would there be any of your influence involved with that?
We shouldn't have any problems. Many of our residents won't drive, will, will buy a bus and help people go to grocery store and go to Target or wherever. A lot of the, we won't have probably half the residents might have cars, and even, they won't be using a K, so...
Right.
The traffic is never, is not going to surprise us at any of our locations.
Okay. I was just wondering about the ingress and egress of the, of the people coming in and out of there.
Yeah, we have, we have other busy streets, and we've not had any issue at any of our locations.
Okay. All right. I used to live behind there on the northernmost lot for 27 years, so it was always very peaceful, but I can anticipate that it would be a big improvement for the property owners there on the west end, you know? Be much prettier than looking at a farmland that just goes on forever.
And it's...
But I appreciate you coming to Madison Heights and doing this, and I hope it works out for you.
Thank you.
It's 100% private property. You're not using public land, is that right?
Right.
Okay. And the current owners of the property are willing to sell?
Yep.
Okay. Great.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Just a few questions. So, you, if I'm correct, is 42% are reserved for low income? So, if it's full capacity, it's right around, like, 50? Right? Because you're saying 42% of the 120 units?
42% of 120.
Yeah, okay. So, it's rough around 50. What is, what do you determine as low income?
It's based on median income, which is set, how they actually, it's based on metropolitan area, so there's a statistical number. So, whatever, it's different. Oakland, Wayne County are actually the same, but the registered counties differ. 60% of median is probably somewhere under, under $6,000 a year, being like, gas off the top of my head, don't hold me to that.
Right. For a single person or a couple, or...
That'd be a single person, the median would be adjusted if it's two people and it's the median.
Sure, sure. And then what about, like, their savings? Are they allowed that, or how's that work?
Yeah, so actually, you are allowed, you don't have to be completely broke. The way that the rent is determined is 30% of our income. If they have savings, the income off that savings is counted as income. So, right now, with the income of the interest before getting out of their savings, you can't off a lot of savings and not make a whole lot of interest. So, yeah, people have, generally, they'll have, you know, they won't probably have pension and social security, they probably have social security, and maybe they sold their house, maybe $60,000 or $8,000 in the bank. We're finding a lot of people are actually giving their houses to the kids, and then they're moving into the retirement community, so there isn't a huge saving.
I'm sorry if somebody already asked this, but it's first come, first served for the low income?
Yes.
Okay, so once the, the bell rings, then how many people sign up? And they don't necessarily have to, they could live wherever, correct? I mean, they don't have to live...
So, it was a different type of program, but Oak Park recently renovated a former elementary school, Jefferson Oaks. Maybe you're familiar with that project. I think there were maybe 180 units, Councilman Soltis, and they had 4,000 applicants...
Oh, wow.
...for low-income housing.
I would imagine, yeah.
That project, Jefferson Oaks, is worth, worth a tour. It's, it's amazing, what do they call it? Adaptive reuse of a former school building to now private apartments for low income, mixed income, actually.
Didn't you, what, you're the company that opened the one in St. Clair Shores?
Yes, we were with Cypress Partners, yeah.
That's real nice. I drove by it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
If I could ask those petitioners, would it be possible for you to provide a list of your establishments in the nearby area so we could see what they're like and get a better idea of what the future holds?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Your honor, one last question.
Yes.
If you didn't ask already. What was, so what's the age cutoff then from what the?
Fifty, fifty-five and over. One person has to be fifty-five or older and everybody else has to be at least fifty.
Fifty-five, okay. Thank you.
Yes, I don't. Yeah, I'm not.
No, I'm not gonna go there.
Please stop, I'm waiting, listen now and.
Thank you.
Other discussion from city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I'd like to actually, if you want to chime in, but I have a couple of questions with the manager, just in terms of transparency and how we got to certain numbers. I monitored the negotiation of the contract and one of the issues during that was originally was constructed with the idea of taxing the non-supported units. And that apparently was not allowable under MISHDA rules.
That's correct.
I have a lifelong obsession with MISHDA and it's not a good one, but they do other things. But having said that, I was wondering if you might just talk about, at least for the record, for the public to understand, how we got to certain numbers. For example, the emergency services number in terms of compensation and how we are, instead of a direct taxation of the property, how we got to the numbers we got to. I'm not looking for any detail, but just an assurance to the public that it's not any sort of an indirect support by the community of the project.
Sure. So originally, the agreement was the forty-two percent would be exempt from taxes and they would just pay four percent of rents for that and the other fifty-eight percent would be taxed just like anybody else, but that is not allowed under MISHDA. Once the project is accept, the pilot's approved for the project, it's for the entire project. And as Clia said, you can't tell in the units who's low income and who is not. They're mingled throughout the entire building, so they're not even two separate properties. It will eventually end up being one parcel. So under the law, we can negotiate all the way up to ten percent of shelter rents, but you have to negotiate a price that makes the project feasible. So we came up with the four percent of shelter rents. That comes out to sixty-four thousand dollars. That sixty-four thousand dollars gets spread to all the taxing units that we collect taxes for in Oakland County. So that includes the school district, the community college, the zoo, Huron Metro Parks. So the city portion of that is twenty thousand, three hundred dollars. So at no point can the city charge this project more than the original taxes. So we met with the fire chief to come up with an estimate of about how many more increased runs this would generate on the fires, public safety, based on other housing developments that we have in the city. And from there, we worked backward to a, the lump sum payment to offset these costs as well as the twenty-five thousand municipal services agreement. So that'll be paid every year and that's retained one hundred percent by the city. And the reason that is, is because it's a direct payment for the emergency medical services that this facility will be receiving. These people won't be sending children to the schools or idling to the zoo or the Huron Metro Parks. So that's kind of how we got to that.
Well, and just to, just to state the obvious, presumably with an older age bracket, we would assume just greater medical needs, which would translate to greater runs than the average population.
Calculated about a one hundred and eleven additional runs.
Okay.
That was the, based on the statistics from the past four years from other complexes like this.
When, when I, when I need to, when I have trouble getting to sleep some night, I'll read how they got to that point, the statistical analysis. But, by the way, with, with respect to MISHDA, MISHDA does some excellent work over the years, and even though I have fun with them, the rule-making process is, is sometimes passes understanding, but they have, over the years, gotten tens of thousands of low-income and starter families in the homes and properties and supported projects that have been beneficial for the community. So I'm glad this one worked out for you. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Other comments from city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Grabstein?
So I would just like to say I'm very much in favor of this project. Over the last couple of years, I've attended a number of workshops and discussion groups regarding housing. And so many people think, well, when we're going to build something, we need to build a single-family home. And that's just not the way it is anymore. I mean, yes, obviously there are people who still want that, but we have a lot of people who are not looking for that. We have people who are younger who are not looking for that, but we also have the older generation, as I think everybody spoke, so I don't know who said it, but somebody made the comment about, you know, basically downsizing. And we have a lot of people who are, you know, who've grown up here, they were here in the city before it was a city, you know, they, they have friends, family, doctors, everything in the area. They don't want to leave, but we just don't have anywhere for them to go. And so this is wonderful because they can stay in the same area. And with respect to the housing prices in the area and in the neighboring area, I think that it's going to do nothing but help because if someone is, you know, if they have a family member in this home and they want to stay close, they're going to stay close. So I think that this is great for the city. I think it's going to help with everything. And I love green space, everybody knows that, but I think that putting this on that land is, is a really good use of it. And I think from what I've seen, there, there's still gonna be green space, there maybe not as much, but there is gonna be green space. And with respect to the, the question about the traffic, one of the things that happens is as people get older, they have five to ten years where they are no longer driving. And so they need some kind of transit, so having a bus there, being on Dequnder, I don't know what the transit system is on Dequnder, but at least it's a main road and maybe over the next few years, we'll see an increase in transit that will help with that. So I'm, I'm completely in favor of this.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sherman?
Did have a couple of comments, Mr. Mayor, for the benefit of council that we have not addressed. It's certainly addressed in the ordinance, but we haven't commented about it. The term of the loan, first of all, the city Madison Heights has not had a pilot since nineteen seventy-seven. We only have two in the city. And I can tell you that the city manager and I have worked extremely hard in getting to this point. Mr. Buck, the project manager of Cypress, can attest to the same fact because there's a lot of moving parts. There's the state, which is MISHDA, there's, there's the project developer, there's us as the city, and there's Oakland County equalization. And it took some time to put the pieces of the puzzle together. One of the points we haven't mentioned is that the term of the, of the pilot is dependent upon what financing the developer gets from MISHDA. If they get a low-income housing tax credit program financing the term of the loan, the term of the pilot is gonna track with the term of that financing. If they get a bond program financing or they don't qualify for the tax credit program, then the term of the loan is longer, it's forty years. And according to MISHDA guidelines, we have to, it has to, the financing has to track with our ordinance. So with regard to the other pieces of the puzzle, when this is up for second reading, there will also be a municipal services agreement on the agenda for council's review and approval. And there, we, we needed some clarification from MISHDA. Oakland County equalization needed to be on board with, with those, with, with that clarification to make sure we were all on the same page. But that's a couple of highlights that we didn't mention. Now, the pilot itself does not go into effect, as Councilwoman Scott mentioned, until forty-two percent of the units in the project are occupied by persons or families who, who are, who are low income, not exceeding sixty percent of the median income as determined by HUD, right in the ordinance. And MISHDA's had a hand in the drafting of the ordinance because ultimately, they'd have to approve the form of the ordinance in order for, for it to go into effect. So I want a council to be aware, aware of that information.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Other comments from city council? All right, let's vote. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a light agenda tonight. We can skip ahead to, motion carried if I didn't say that. Okay, we can skip ahead though to the minutes of the regular council meeting of seven, eight, nineteen. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that the minutes be approved as printed.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion regarding the motion made by Councilwoman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to adopt as printed the meeting minutes of seven, eight, nineteen? No discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. We're passing on appointments tonight. There's no executive session. So before we adjourn, I'd invite any closing comments from council and staff. Let me start off with one thing. For the gentlemen that came to Harwood, we appreciate that you were here to address your concerns. I, for one, am very worried about traffic patterns in the south end of the city. I grew up on Hudson. I have family in the south end. I own property in the south end of Madison Heights. And we've been fighting MDOT for years. I've been here for twelve years now and it's just been the bane of my existence is fighting the state of Michigan government and bureaucracy. So we apologize that you feel that you're getting the, the runaround. So from our perspective, we want to advocate for our residents, especially our property owners who come to city meetings, right? So I'd like city council to consider what our options would be, if any. I mean, maybe the, the boot of state government's on our throat and we can't act, but if there is any opportunity for us to cause the state to alter their designs, obviously that would be the first priority for the state to pay for it. But then I would be interested to see what the cost would be for us and our taxpayers to do something to help preserve the peace and tranquility of the neighborhood. Gentlemen, if it's ten million dollars to build a wall, we're not gonna do it. But we might as well see what the options are legally and financially. I think that's at least we'll start the conversation. So members of the public feel like we're, we're fighting for them behind the scenes because, I promise you, we are. And if I feel defeated, it's because, ooh, they got me on the ropes. But please, if city council would, you know, just in your general comments, be supportive of my request for us to push for state options and if not, see what the city options are to preserve the peace and tranquility of those neighborhoods affected by the expand, expansion of I-75. We'll continue closing comments. As always, we start with the city councilman, Mr. Corbett?
The mayor jumped me by about thirty seconds. I was left a little cold by the, the response. Now, I will tell you that partially, it's because that's what it is. We get the same runaround from the state. I remember talking with staff two, three, four years ago. The original plan at that corner, I just remember it because I stood out there about this time of the year. The original plan was to, to bring traffic off right at Eleven Mile. It was not going down the Service Drive. And in fact, it was going to take out a number of properties up there, including Bootles and then the old, the Diamond Place.
Gym.
Yeah, Diamond Gym. That, and then somewhere along the line, that changed. And I remember when the former planning director sent a memo up that said, oh, by the way, they're going halfway down the subdivision with that off-ramp. And, and as the mayor said, we, we oppose that because if nothing else, because of the obvious statement that you reflected, which is it's going to disrupt life in that neighborhood. Not to mention the sound and the other things. So, yeah, I, I think I would have answered you a little differently, but, but certainly there are a couple of things we can do. We can talk about closing streets and you gotta be careful about that. I'm sure that there is a book somewhere in our library about that thick with rules, regulations for regulating traffic, but I'm sure that part we could do, depending on what makes sense for public safety. You always have to allow for the possibility in case people gotta get out of the neighborhood for some reason too. And for traffic flows and so on. That we can do. I, I, I agree as far as the walls, that's something we gotta try and get the state to kick in. It's, and, and if, I don't know if you, you guys are old enough to remember the six ninety-six adventure, but, you know, killing me here. But they were, there were lawsuits about walls and sound barriers that took thirty years, twenty years to resolve. People's whole careers were spent trying to, trying to integrate that freeway with the, the neighborhoods and the environment. So, yeah, I, I certainly support it. I, I think, I think initially a report from staff and update, at least of that work that we did a few years ago, to see where we stand. I don't know if the engineering, is the engineering been finished for that stretch? It has to have been, hasn't it?
No. The plans for segment three have not been given to us yet.
The engineering? Because they do it in two, they do site.
Yeah, it's not a hundred percent complete yet.
Well, then it might be.
I don't even think it's thirty percent complete yet.
Well, there might be a chance to have an impact then. For whatever reason, they just seem to love that idea coming down the Service Drive, so let's see what we can do though. But thank you for coming. That's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, so I have a few things tonight. First, I'll echo the sentiments. I think we need to consistently look into what we can do there. I am not incredibly optimistic, just to be completely honest. We've got nothing but the runaround, but anything that's within our power to do, I believe all of us are gonna signal support on that. So I appreciate you coming out and, first of all, coming out to the informational meeting, that, that's important and not enough people do that. And then second, coming to this council meeting, also important and, and we've got a lot of chairs. So, thank you, thank you for coming out and, and I'd encourage you to have that meeting with our city manager. In fact, I'd encourage every resident to do that. I know your calendar will fill up, but that, that is, that is part, that, that is part of the job. And I, and I know our city manager, Melissa Marsh, has been really trying to get out into the community. And so she's been publicly at pretty much any and every event and every restaurant and running around every single one of our parks. But sometimes you need to have a conversation in city hall, at the office, and so I would encourage you to take advantage of that, if nothing else, for informational purposes. Second item tonight, the award that the arts board was up for, the MML award, was supposed to be announced today, but MML decided that they were gonna do it tomorrow. So I don't have an update other than we finished number one for public voting, so our residents came through for us in a big way, as did all of our staff members and everybody who was voting. So I thank everybody for doing that. We will know tomorrow whether or not we make it. Though I will say this, if, if the Michigan Municipal League does not include us in the top four and we were the public's number one vote, I mean, I'm not gonna say there's, there's, there's an issue there, but I think we should, we should do a vote count or something. Second, on the arts board, I wanted to follow up on the recognition for our student rep, Harley Murdarsky, that I had requested in the last meeting. She's got very limited time left before going, going to college, and so I'd love to be able to get that before. If not, let's schedule it for a break, but I want to make sure that we recognize her. As I said last meeting, she's done more for our city as a high school resident than most of us could aspire to. And so I really want to make sure that we get that done and scheduled. I'm not sure what has happened on that. I just wanna put out that simple reminder that we have limited meetings before she goes up to school and after that, we'll just have to schedule on a break or something, which would be okay if we can't get it done. I know there's only two more meetings left in the summer, so it'd be okay for a break. I just want to make sure that she's notified and then we'll be scheduled accordingly to where we can make sure her family is able to come out. Next, I think Councilor Grabstein is onto something with the garage sale. I think a citywide garage sale makes a lot of sense. I support it a hundred percent. And I'd, I'd actually love to see multiple, multiple boards get involved and turn it into a fundraiser. I think not only could it be a garage sale, but you could, oh, gosh, probably ten years ago, we did a citywide open house and the realtors on our, our panel up here will be able to tell you about it, but every property that was for sale in the city, all of those were being shown that day. And then businesses were offering discounts, the schools were open for potential residents to tour them. It'd be really cool to do something like that in conjunction with a citywide garage citywide garage sale and make a really large event out of it. And you can have fundraiser-type events. And then you can also raise money through the act of people wanting to list their address on our master list. So, I think it's a great idea. And I really think that some of our boards in the city could raise a lot of money off of that. I think it'd be a good thing. Great for the city, overall. Finally, last meeting, we had the single bid contract. And that was an area that I was pretty frustrated that we didn't do any type of a market analysis. I know it was in the minority, the only no vote on it, which I appreciate. But I also, I don't want to get in that situation again. You know, from a principle standpoint, we need to have an understanding of the market for every one of our contracts, professional services, long-term contracts, waste haulers. We need to annually, and I'd like to see this, I'd love for staff to look into this, and give us a report back. But a policy that I would like to see is that every year, prior to the budget cycle, we check market rates on all of our long-term contracts. Anything that our city is spending money on, we can make sure that our residents are getting the best value. And in cases then, where we have issues that could potentially be a breach of contract, we're able to make a decision knowing what the market rates are. We're able to know that our residents are getting the best deal for any of the services that we're contracting out in the city. And I think we just need to make that a part of our standard operating cadence here in the city, where our staff does that on an annual basis, calling up three vendors that are in the space and getting an understanding of what current market rates are. It'll allow us to grade how good the contracts we're already in on. And it'll allow us to understand what might be potentially out there in the market, should that contract end, or should we want to put something out to bid. So I'd love for her to see a proposal on that. If it would require a vote from council, happy to propose that if we add it to a future agenda. But right now, I'd love for staff to just research what that would entail. And I do think that there's a lot of benefits for our residents to make sure that we're not overpaying, that we're not stuck with the single bidder. And frankly, from our perspective, we have a contract right now that we are unhappy with. And one of the reasons why we haven't quite moved to Plan B is because we don't have any market awareness. We don't know what those costs are. And not knowing is a terrible reason to make a decision. So I think this will allow us to do our due diligence. And I'd love to be able to see what our staff would be capable of when they have all of that information. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Gettings?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering of council if we could do a condolence resolution. We lost a former mayor, State Senator Mr. Huffman, passed away a couple of weeks ago. He was very active in the beginning of our city, back in the late 50s, early 60s. Again, he served as mayor. I'm not sure if he was a rep or not, but I know he was a State Senator.
And a rep.
And a rep. I thought so, Margene. We named one of our parks after him. Former Varsity Field in the South End is now Bill S. Huffman Park. He was a great guy. And if we could send out a condolence resolution, that would be wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Sherman?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to echo the comments of Councilman Gettings. Madison Heights lost a patriarch of this city in Bill Huffman, who passed away July 10. He was a former councilperson. He was a former mayor. He was a state representative, a state senator. And as indicated at his funeral a week ago Saturday, he was the head of the Senate Appropriations Committee and the head of the Education Committee, and considered by many to be one of the most powerful men in the state of Michigan, because he controlled the purse strings. He was a remarkable guy, who helped a lot of people along the way. He has left a beautiful family, which is his legacy aside from his political career. And he will be sorely missed. They don't make too many Bill Huffmans anymore, that's for sure. My condolences to his entire family. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mrs. Marsh?
I have two things. We will be having two general meetings for the proposal M.H. for informational purposes. The first one, and actually, I'm having tons of meetings if you're part of groups, but these are two public meetings. July the 31st, right here in City Council chambers, it starts at 6:00. And it's being held here so it can be taped and it will be aired on cable as well. And then on September the 19th, we are going to be doing a special informational meeting at the hall. It'll be, anybody can be invited, but we'll be providing pizza. And we also will have members from the Recreation Department there to provide child activities, so parents can attend and allow their full focus to be on the village and what it entails. Also, for anybody who's been watching councils since back into January, council has really been working on revising our boards and commissions process. And so we will be making a push. We are currently making a push for members to join our boards and commissions. The deadline to apply is Friday, August the 2nd. And then at the next following council meeting, we will be doing the appointments to those boards. So if you're interested in any boards and commissions, or just getting involved in any way, feel free to check out our website. That's probably the easiest way. Or contact the City Clerk's Office or City Hall. We have quite a few vacancies.
Thank you. City Clerk, Ms. Prince?
Nothing, Ms. Deanie. Thank you.
Ms. Grassteen?
Thank you. So I would request that staff look into my garage sale idea and just maybe give us an update at the next meeting. I like what Mr. Bliss was saying about using the opportunity, not just for people to put things in front of their home to sell, but for businesses, schools, different associations to do that open house idea. I know that a lot of times when people have garage sales, they do it as a fundraiser for different events. You know, I've been to several where any proceeds are going to the three-day breast cancer walk. So I think that this is a situation where, yes, if there's an association that you want to do that for, or if maybe get some of the boards involved as well. I think it's a great idea for everything. So if we could just maybe get an update at our next meeting that, yes, it's a go, or no, we don't have enough time to plan it for this year, or do you have an update now?
Should I give an update when it was my turn to speak? I actually have worked with the DPS on this, and we've come up with a plan. We're just, they were supposed to be looking at a calendar, picking a date. So, that was it. We didn't see any reason why we couldn't do it. To share the involvement from the city is fairly low.
It's minimal.
So the whole idea is that the Recreation Department would sell a garage sale sign for a very low fee, and that basically will buy you a spot on the map and the advertisement. So we just need to pick a date. And I don't know any dates off the top of my head that are terrible. So.
Yeah, I had been thinking middle end of August, not something really any sooner because of the timing of when I came up with the idea. But, you know, if this is a success, then perhaps next year, it's just something that we add to our calendar. So when the Parks and Rec calendar comes out, everyone can see that on whatever weekend we choose, we're doing that. And then businesses can plan accordingly. But thank you for that update. With respect to 75, I don't think that there's a whole lot that the city can do. I feel for you. I think it's really, it's too bad, that whole situation there. But we can take a look at what the options are. You know, I don't want to live next to a freeway either. I completely understand that. And there might be options with, I don't know so much of a wall putting up, but maybe doing trees or something. There might be some kind of more of a softer wall, because I don't think that people really want to have that at the end of their road or at the end of the home. But if we can look into something, we're open to suggestions. So, you know, if there are people in the city who this isn't really directly impacting, but you know of a situation where there was some kind of solution, let us know. We're open to ideas. And if there is something that the state can do, that we can get the state to do, we'll do it. We'll do it. But as the mayor said, our hands are generally tied. When we try and fight the state, we don't usually win. But, you know, maybe we'll find a loophole and we'll be able to do something for you. And I also want to echo my sentiments for Bill Huffman. I attended the funeral, and it wasn't really a funeral. It was a celebration of life. And the stories about him were just very inspiring. He was a wonderful man. And his family is his legacy, his wonderful family. So I'm full support of the resolution suggested by Mr. Gettings. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would support a condolence resolution for the Huffman family. This city would probably not even be here if it wasn't for Bill Huffman. I was devastated to hear he had passed away. Glad he had lived a wonderful 94 years. And his influence never altered or changed. If you were running for office and you got your sign on his lawn on Dequender, you were almost guaranteed to be elected. That's how influential Bill Huffman was, but for good reasons. And the city owes him a lot. Like I said, we might not even be a city if it wasn't for Bill, because he worked so diligently on getting the charter resolution passed, and then appointing the citizens that served our first council. Jeff, you know how devastated I was when I found out about your house, because I knew you were right on that line. And I came to you and I told you, and I said, it was so hard to tell you this news, because of all the things that you've put into your house. You're a very caring homeowner. He is also conveniently related to me through marriage. His son is a super kid, and actually is my one and only great-grandchild. But, so I appreciate you coming here today, Jeff. And I just, I'm praying so hard that we can help you, because I know how devastating that would be if that was the street that people had to come off of. That would just be so hard on your property values. And that was the thing I cared about the most, because I know how much you care about your house and how well you take care of it. And so we will, as the mayor said, we are your advocates. We will do whatever you can, or at least to make the situation bearable for you, so that you don't lose that. And you still get your privacy and your safety there on your corner, because that's devastating news to hear. The wall will be, the last house on the block is next to him on the west side. And his, that would be torn down. That's part of the removal. And Jeff would then be the first house next to that. And so I can understand how hard that is. I'm thinking about that, and how much that I care about what we can do for you. And I hope there is something. At least we can look at something, like I said, to make things easier for you, so that your whole street isn't affected. And we went out this morning, the senior citizens and I went out, and we drove around the city. So if you saw a senior bus sitting in front of your house, it's because you were probably on the list, or we noticed that your house was especially well-cared-for. There were so many. I think we judged about 21 homes, but they were beautifully taken care of. I appreciate all the people that go out there day after day and pick all those little weeds and manicure their lawns to perfection. Some of them are just totally amazing. And it's going to be a hard choice, but we will, we're probably being given awards on the last week, the last council meeting in August. We're gearing for that. So, I'm sure there will be a lot of mentionables, too, that people that work very hard on their lawns. As for Harley Murdowski, she's one of my adopted Lamphier grandkids. And I will be at her graduation party this coming Saturday. So I will make sure that she knows how much she's appreciated and see what we can work out for getting her. And let her know how important it is that we would like, because I agree with everything you said about her, Mark. She's amazing. And she's going to go far. But she's so talented in what she does. And she's dependable. She's always at the meetings, and she contributes so much. So, it's a joy to have her on. I hope we can get a lot of students on the board just like her. And the last thing I would say is just a piece of news. There's going to be an interesting seminar at the library on August 29th, which is a Thursday, at 6:30 p.m. There will be a lady, Marie Klondo, who's going to be talking about tidying up her home and providing methods of decluttering your home, which I am a great candidate for that meeting. But it's going to be at the library on Thursday, August 29th, at 6:30. And if you are going, if you'd like to go, register online on our website, or call the library to reserve your space, because I'm sure they would like to know how much people, how many people are going to be there. But I think it's a great thing that they're offering that. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Saltis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I want to talk about, take all my time to talk about one topic, which is an important, critical issue regarding public safety and public health. My focus tonight would be the Sacra building operations here in Madison Heights. For those who don't know, this building is that hit is giant smoke stacks that are defunct between 12 and 13 on John R. Bypage Middle School, I believe, and the senior center. I went on a tour today, this afternoon, with the fire chief and the representative from Sacra. I will, at this time, just describe what I saw. The building, it's a large building. It's split in two. It's made up of two parts of it into one building that's connected. The west side has a public drive-through dumping, private, a public dumping, where the people drive in, they dump their supposed to be construction trash. But I saw a mattress. I saw a couch, furniture, carpet. The pile looked like it almost reached the ceiling. Then I was taking to the east side of the building, that's supposed to be locked up. It looked like, to me, it looked like time stopped in 1988, I believe. It looked like time stopped. Everything, it's just like everyone just left, just ran out of there. And there's the dust, there's the dirt, there's peeling all over the place, paint peeling. There's old wraps on the pipes. And then we stood right next to the base of the giant smoke stacks. And I was told that when it was operational, that the trash that was being burned, which was all garbage, that it had a spray, that water spray on it, in order to take away some of the pollutants before it went out into the atmosphere or into the air. So then I said, well, wait, what happened to the water? And unequivocally said, well, it just went down the drain. So then we walked up the stairs, I think it was about three stories, into the upper level on the east side. And there I was astounded. There was, once we got in, it was like an open flat. There were obvious trespassing going on, probably by troubled youth. There was a ton of graffiti everywhere. Although the windows were boarded up, and multiple times, they were still getting in. And I was told that the graffiti that we just saw today was recent, which means that somehow they got back in again, which tremendously bothers me. If you've seen this room, it would bother you, too, because what if these kids are smoking, they drop a cigarette, and all that stuff's on the floor? Like I said, it wouldn't just look like it just disappeared in 1998, and it catches fire. There was, in there, there's a large pit. I was told that the garbage was put into, and a giant crane on the side that I saw would reach down, grab it, and pick it up. That must have been, must 30, 40 feet deep. And across the room was a beam. It must have been about 16 inches, I say. And it went across the room, like I said. So, obviously, there's graffiti on that wall by that beam, which meant that these kids were scaling that little tiny beam across the room, graffitiing on the wall. And that's a long drop down. And that really disturbed me, because obviously somebody, they did do it. There was a whole bunch of graffiti on that side. Now, I think we need to protect our youth, our minors, even if they do stupid things, because teenagers do happen to do that. I think we need to protect them, because it was obvious to me that it's a problem. And also, I want to sincerely apologize to public citizen Madison Heights that I didn't go through this sooner, because I should have. And I saw what was in that building, which I didn't see, but it's there. I think, I encourage my colleagues to go to, take a tour, and see for themselves all the danger that exists, because it's real. And I think we need to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Saltis. I agree with your comments about that site. I also want to echo the sentiments of former mayor Bill Huffman, who did pass away July 10th, 2019. His wife Betty survived him. They were together for 67 years. It's a remarkable length of time to know each other. And Margene Scott is right, we may not have a city but for their efforts. It's truly amazing. And so one of his daughters was in the room tonight. She left a little early, Sherry Huffman. So it's nice to see her today, despite the loss of her father. So let's please send the city's warmest condolences to the surviving Huffman family. This weekend, Saturday, July 27th, from noon to 6:00 p.m., is the Asian Festival here in Madison Heights. It's hosted by the Council of Asian Pacific Americans over at the UFCW, the retail, the Commercial Retail Clerks' Hall on Horse Brown Drive. It's an event open to the public. It's free, free admission. They'll have different Asian cultures represented through dance and food and industry. They moved this event from another city to our city.
They moved this event from another city to our city last summer because of how welcoming our government is, how diverse our business district is, so I can't wait to go to this event and enjoy. I hope you, I hope you'll join me. To the gentlemen again, thank you for coming to speak up about I-75. We'll see what options there are. It's usually, when you're trying to diminish the, the sound and the pollution of a freeway, your options are trees, berms, walls, or barricades. And obviously, the greater the distance, the better, but in your case, there's a very limited distance to work with. But I'm certain we'll get a report on what those options and the costs, and who the funders of those possible projects would be. So I hope you'll come back and ask for a status report. I could put it in the newspaper, but it might be, be nice to hand it to you personally when we know. All right, I don't believe there's any other business before us tonight, so the meeting is adjourned. Good night.